...scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We're grateful to have all of you present with us and we're very grateful to have Bobby Jackson, distinguished Lewis County Commissioner, with us. He's going to make the presentation.
You've been here for a while.
Yes, I did, yeah. In our community, you're quite distinct. So, let's proceed with the roll call. I'd invite our city clerk to conduct that for us.
Okay. Judy Costello?
Here.
Jason Daley?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. Good. We've got a full quorum here this evening. We'll have all the council members. With that, we'll proceed with our pledge. We'd invite all to plead the pride. Mr. Parsons, would you read this, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. We'll proceed with our agenda and the mayor's report. I'd like to update everyone. You'll load item number one, is update on our preschool property. I took advantage of the situation to touch base with Jim Mabbett, our superintendent, who's been here for the last hour, giving his presentation on the school bond. And I'm pleased to inform the council that according to Jim Mabbett, from his perspective, we've cleared most of the required elements of the permit process and that he is going to be sending his representative, Hall Hellenberg, probably tomorrow morning, to work through the finer details. So, I'm excited to report that he is already setting in motion plans for a ribbon cutting date to be set in the not-too-distant future. And he assured there'd be at least two pairs of scissors for that cutting process, plus a baby or two to kiss. So, we'll make it a cause and event we're celebrating.
Finally, you have to kiss a baby.
Exactly.
Yay!
Just one. That's all it is.
I'll be there, but only on the cheek.
So, does that mean--
That's a baby.
So, does that mean school will start then in September or August?
Well--
Obviously, because the year's over with.
Now, we need to get those kids out of the Assembly of God church.
Oh.
But the school is paying the school and the church at the moment to cover costs associated with that. But I think it'll happen before--
It's a preschool, though, so it's year-round, isn't it?
No.
No? I don't think it's during--
Oh, it's not? It's just during school year? Oh, okay.
Oh, I didn't know that was all that, yeah.
I don't know all about that. Can't start until some new months and stop during some of the--
But that's a good question, because I know that they have in mind some adult-related programs that might function during the summer months. So, it's a piece of that option. But we'd heard some rumors circulating through the community that the Castle Rock School District was threatening to pull the school out of the community. And I mentioned that to Jim Mabbett, and he started laughing out loud and put a hand on my shoulder and said, "You can squelch that rumor. That is never going to happen." So, positive report. Very pleased about that. So, now let's jump down to item number two. This is an update on our Fourth of July event. I know that it's a challenge each year, but this community has been fully supportive of that event, thanks to the good efforts of residents of this community. And it's always been a challenge, though, especially since the city's decided to cover the insurance costs and costs of the fireworks themselves. So, we've set in motion the efforts to formulate and prepare for that event. We've reached out and spoken with Reggie Smith, who happens to be here. We're grateful to have him. And we've once again go through the annual process of working through the challenging elements associated with the Fourth of July fireworks event. And thanks to the efforts on the part of individuals who are coming to the rescue of the community, we've begun in the last 48 hours to overcome some of the stumbling blocks. And I'm pleased to report that. These are not easy events, and it takes a great deal of patience and timing and willingness to adhere to state regulations, which, as you can imagine, are very protective of not only the individuals involved in the fireworks display, but the participants, the people who've come to participate and watch it. So, I'm prepared to report that I think we're in a position to overcome some of the issues that are so troublesome. We've got a group of volunteers who've come up with some ideas that I'm pretty confident might overcome some of the issues that have heretofore been challenging, one of which is the storage of the fireworks leading up to the event, because they need to be connected in a challenging process. You know, it's not easy to do, and the individuals who do that need certification. So, the city last year paid-- One of the other issues is the insurance costs. It was $1,900 to cover the costs of the certified fireworks. So, do you have a title for that, Reggie?
Using Class B fireworks, you do not need a fire safety license. May I say something before anything goes on here? Has anybody talked to the fire marshal for the district?
Yeah, that was an issue--
Has anybody talked to him yet?
Yeah, we just brought that up this afternoon.
Okay. And taking talk to the fire marshal, this problem that you're having with the special building I built for the fire marshal, I think you can solve this problem a lot by, first of all, talking to the people who know what you need to have done, instead of running off into spinning around in circles.
Okay. Yeah. I wouldn't characterize what's happening running in circles as simply responding to the state law--
I understand. That's the first you need to--
Yes. I think we've reached the same conclusion. We talked to our city planner, and of course, we've got the state law. We have copies of that. This is an important conversation, so I hope you don't mind as we kind of spread this out as mayors and a topic. We're not going to decide any particular decisions on it, but we're going to examine for a few minutes the nuances of this challenge. We're either going to make it happen, or we won't have our Fourth of July fireworks event. The council gets to explore that. We don't have to decide tonight. To cut short the conversation, we did engage in some research to see if we could overcome those issues. And we did decide that we need to talk to our fire marshal, that fire marshal and, of course, is Les Townsend. And Les Townsend is an individual who has very little wiggle room. He tends to adhere to the law as he sees it. There's no guarantees there. But we did get permission from the Castle Rock School District to place an eight-by-20-foot metal cargo building with apparently no insurance costs associated with that place, but on the school property. And we could do that. And our city planner indicated that because that's community service property, not residential or commercial, and it was such a short-term need that we just might be able to circumvent that, but we'd have to talk to the fire marshal. Insightful observation. So, figuring that we can overcome that critical problem, then we are looking at the $1,900 for the insurance coverage by the individual who lights the fuses, plus the $300 to $500 to cover potential vendors or exhibits or bouncy houses that might be involved. The city council weighed those financial costs. When we did the budget, we allocated $3,500.
Not enough money for fireworks.
That's a little short. If you take the insurance costs out, it gives you about $1,000 to show. So, that's where a group of individuals, I understand, and thanks to some outreach efforts on the part of our very patriotic residents, maybe there'll be some fundraising activities that we can bring up to cover those costs. So, and I get a very positive feedback from that initiative. So, that's my report at this moment in time, where we will, I think, if there's impetus, energy, unification of individuals in the community, we might be able to pull this off. So, there. Question?
Have you had your conversation with Mr. Townsend already, or about the C containment and all of that?
No. He's at Coast and left later today, but we anticipate getting back with him hopefully Monday. Is that what you--
What, tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, today's not Friday. So, yeah, we're out on the trail.
So, how does-- Can we continue the conversation briefly? How does a fire marshal on building codes person, how's that all work? How's all that work on the same business card?
Well, we'll find out.
Okay.
So often, we're in that explorer--
credentials, fire marshals--
Can I say one more thing if I could?
Your council--
Absolutely.
Yes, go for it, Reggie.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. These are Class B fireworks. There is no modification done to any of the fireworks. The only thing done to the fireworks that you can buy at any fireworks stand is that at an extended fuse, which makes it safer. I get mine to be able to light the fuse and be able to walk away from the event, and these safe. That is the only thing that I do to the fireworks.
That's good.
Because there was some, but that I enhance the fireworks. I do not.
So, as far as you know, the attachment of special fuses that connect them in any way is not subject to the state's fireworks laws? Okay, that's good to know. Sure, the fire marshal will be able to add insight to that if there is any question or condition.
Yeah, question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If this is an event that happens year after year after year--
Well, it's after you're officially sponsoring the city.
Okay. Why is there always issues that come up every year that have to be tackled and dealt with? Why isn't it just in place now so that-- I mean, it's a huge event for me here.
Well, it's--
It's becoming it.
It's becoming it. It hasn't been always huge. I mean, the first fireworks was a group of fireworks by three families that put their thing on the back of a trailer and lit them all at the same time. It lasted all five minutes, but it was a spectacular, life-changing experience for those who were involved. And so, you started--
The band was good that year. You didn't say life and the experience. And the food was excellent.
Yeah. For those of you who witnessed it, but we've just had an increasing sense of celebratory patriotism in the community, and so it's just kind of great. But that's it. I mean, we deal with this every year, and we're just growing pains. We're trying to abide by state law, and we try the new one on for size each year, it seems, and we'll eventually get this polished and perfected.
Is there no fire marshal in Lewis County? Why are we going outside of Lewis County's fire marshal? I mean, it's no secret on Lewis County, but, you know, there's got to be one in Los Angeles or San Diego.
Yeah, it's complicated. Our fire district--
Riverside, isn't it? Riverside has their own--
Shaleas Fire Department--
Yeah.
Or Shaleas City has Riverside Fire.
Yeah. They charge a fee--
Is he charged Mr. Townsend's fee?
Well, yeah, he comes-- He's volunteered to do that for us, but I'm sure it'll be added to his fee, but his regular monthly bill. But when he agreed to do those, I don't know if he-- Did we arrange some sort of payment for him?
Yeah, it's written in his contract.
Yeah, he'll perform it, but is it within the parameters of his fees? Or is it--
No, he's not paying it for free. Yeah, it's in there. I don't remember what the details are, but--
Yes.
It was part of his normal hourly rate, it seems.
Yeah. Which I have a feeling that if we did a comparative analysis, probably less than what we pay. I wish we had a fire marshal right next door who could do it, but that's a different entity.
Do you know what Shaleas charges anybody?
No.
I mean, it's nice to buy low, because a lot of times get asked.
Is there any-- Is Shaleas the only fire marshal?
No. Probably is.
So, our district--
District 20--
Has one.
Probably have a fire marshal.
Yes, it does. Goes by district, and you have to go to the fire marshal in the district that you belong in.
I suspect we discovered that, yeah. But we, I don't mind, council prefers that we would, because we're just reaching out to the fire marshal on this. We can do some research on that.
You have to talk to one that is for our district. To that one, yeah.
Yeah.
I need assistance.
Well, I can tell you that we've had dealings with our district in the past, and Terry Williams is the current fire chief, and he oversees the decisions regarding such things. And I don't think I want to make, as a matter of public record, the nature of his relationship with the city of Vator, who's a former police chief of the city of Winlock. But I don't mind approaching Terry Williams to see if he might be amenable to providing a service for a fee and do a comparative analysis.
A fee for what? I'm confused.
To do the research on what it would take, to find out just what constraints there might be to place a metal cargo--
If we just talk to the fire marshal for the district, he will give you the constraints about the building, because I talked to him, and that's why I built my building to his constraints.
Reggie, you've heard that we had a resident suggest that we do a cost analysis, because we'll incur a fee from our fire marshal that we have on contract. So, if we talk to the District 20, we'll find out what their costs might be if we choose to do that. So, I think that's what we're saying. We'll talk to them, and we'll ask if they're going to charge us something to do that analysis. There. We'll work through this, and so I hope you get that set. So, with that, I think that-- I think I know where we're going with this. I think we will just continue to work our way through the issues, and we'll be fine. One more comment?
Certainly.
Yes, go ahead.
Tell me if I'm wrong or not, but a fire marshal is assigned a district and may or may not go with county, because that's the way--
Right.
And you couldn't-- That's his responsibility. He's accountable for what he gives permission for or not, so you can't shop around for any more obliging fire marshal from another county or area who'll say yes when the other ones say no.
We don't have an official contractual relationship with the fire district in District 20. So, yeah, we can work through those issues after the meeting. Work all that out. Feel free to call the officer, come in, and we'll work our way through all those details. Okay. Then with that, that's my update on the Fourth of July. But I'd be remiss if I didn't extend my appreciation as the mayor of the city of Vator to individuals who are responding to the concerns and are rising up and finding solutions to it, and to even those who are so willing to put their lives on the line in blasting off the fireworks. I really have that appreciation, because I am a believer in the Fourth of July celebration. I believe very first voices in support of it. So, I want to do everything we can do to make this happen and improve it every single year. It would be fantastic. So, with that, let's now turn the time over to the council to-- Do you have any council reports? Do you have any?
I do. I was waiting for Jason.
Okay.
There he is.
Okay. He's drying. Everybody is welcome to join us at the main day meeting tomorrow at 9:00 at the community center. This is the first time hearing of it, so-- And Jason is not on board.
Oh, I'm not on board tomorrow.
It's Lee Onis' turn. No, it's Lee Onis' turn. Okay.
Nope.
I have a comment tonight. I called Mayor Steve in Toledo today and told him that he's unable to attend his meeting tonight. Vision Toledo--
Oh, you did.
And extended my apology, because I wanted to, and they said if I come by tomorrow morning, I can have some of their flyers. So, I'll go by the office tomorrow when I go to work and come back.
Okay, so you aren't under time crunch necessarily for me?
No, no. I'm not going to jump up and race off. And my next comment is, is the contractor for the street improvement project on A eventually going to notify property owners of the street project? And where will the small light fixtures end up? Because, as you remember, they were donated.
Oh, they're existing?
Those little ones--
Existing lights?
I think there's five left, the little existing ones. They have little brass tags on the person's names and stuff.
I tell you, Devin Jackson is going to be here tomorrow. Misses the building at 11:00. If anyone wants to come and ask him a question, be here if you'd like. We can pose that question, too.
Is that an invitation?
He's got some issues involving the contractors involved in that project that apparently wants to talk about tomorrow. Are you aware of that, Jerry?
No.
You are invited.
I don't know that he has issues. He's just--
No, he's arranging, making contractual arrangements. So, if you'd like to come, feel free. I know it is not necessary for council members to be there, or I could ask him for you, if you'd like me to.
Because I'm at work, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
If you would ask him those two comments of, will property owners be notified? And the light fixtures-- The little light fixtures would be of interest as to what the disposition of them will be.
I don't think that will be up to them. I think we can do whatever we want with them. They belong to the city. I know the other two that have come down are in the city shop right now. They just are sitting there, but they aren't going to want them or--
Right.
Yeah. They belong to the city.
Yeah, if they're easily removed and damaged--
I don't know what we would do with them, but--
But we'll ask.
Questions? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then, any other council reports? Okay. With that, let's proceed with our agenda approval for this evening's meeting. I don't have any modifications to the city business portion.
I would like to add. Can I add something? I should like to talk with my fellow council people about our city attorney and Mr. Townsend. If we could just do that in like a little group discussion, maybe number line item eight. And then I wanted to ask a suggestion. I'm not sure what, line item six, which I believe Mike requested. I was wondering, did we want to include that in with line item five as just an open discussion about both of those items?
They were probably--
Because I think they might run together.
They'll probably end up running together, yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense.
That would be cool with me, if that would be cool with you guys.
Let's submit that form of the motion.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to add to tonight's agenda, discussion about the city attorney and Les Townsend as line item number eight, and then to combine line item number five pop-up buildings and line item number six, commercial zone home occupation discussion.
Okay, heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to combine items five and six as line item discussion, and then add item number seven.
No.
The last, add a new item at the end, which would be, end up being, well, let's call it end number eight, then, the discussion on city attorney Les Townsend. Did you capture that? All right. With that, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Submitted by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Excellent. Another minute's approval of our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for March 22, 2018.
Heard the motion submitted to approve the minutes of the previous council meeting as noted. Do we have a second? I'll say that. Submitted by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. First half of March 2018, $15,891.10. The end of March 2018, $31,323.31. Quote this down, right. For a total of $47,214.41 for the March 2018 total.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted motion to approve the voucher extension as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll say that.
Secuted by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. We have one vote in opposition, but motion carries. I vote a quarter one. Let's proceed with our special report. As I indicated, please have Bobby Jackson with us, county commissioner, and is Derek Domers with you?
Derek's not going to be with us tonight. He had another commitment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Thank you for having me back. For the record, I have Bobby Jackson, Lewis County Commissioner, sitting for District Two, but also Commissioner for the entire county. I've come, first of all, to apologize to the city of Vator. Before the last time I was here, I was lacking information. And this time, I've done my homework a little bit, and I've put together and brought to you, this is a study that was done by Nelson Nygaard, consulting firm that studies transit for our state. And this was a feasibility study that they did, as we talk about countywide transit, to see if it was feasible for us to expand the benefit district throughout the entire area of Lewis County. And while I won't go over page after page with you, I gave that to you, because I know everyone likes bedtime reading, and so this will be something that you can look at and can ask questions about at our Transportation Benefit Conference, which is coming up April the 6th. Mr. Mayor, you should have received a letter from us already inviting you to be there as the representative for the city of Vator. But I would point you to page 12, and you'll see a map. I can get everybody to take a look at that very quickly. I promised to keep this as short as possible, because we have a very large agenda, and I want to get out of the way so we can discuss other city benefits. This is a look at the map of what the districts would look like should we be able to expand the transit benefit district. And just to give you a little bit of follow-up, right now, Twin Transit services Central and Shaleas, those areas exclusively. There is another transit system, Lewis Mountain Transit, that services the east side of the county. Right now, they service about 100% of the population of their area, which is around 1,000 people, that are riding the bus from Hackwood all the way into Shaleas three times daily. They're making round trips three times daily. The owner of that organization, Doug Hay, is a 501(c)(3), and because the state has raised the level of matching funds for grants, it's going to wind up with him out of business in June of 2019. They went from 5% up to 10%. Gratefully, the state capped that. They were looking to make it 50%, which in essence puts 50 and c3 back in business. But Doug proposed to Twin Transit, asking us if we would be willing to consider a possible consolidation of his services into our services, as I sit on the board of Twin Transit. And so, as we began to discuss that, we began to discuss, what would it look like if we expanded the benefit district to the entire county, to include cities like Vator, Winlock, and also Toledo, which sits in a seven-mile radius of each other? Also included would be the town of PL on the west side, Napa Vine, up the I-5 corridor. We would also cover Mossy Rock, Morton, all the way across the county. In other words, what our goal is, is to connect the entire county with transportation. This is important. This is an important thing that we're trying to accomplish, and the reason being is because we have a number of people that look to Lewis County for possible investment opportunities. Mike, we're working on a Costco for you specifically. It's going to be your Costco. But-- But just to Mike, to something Mike was asking about, what would it look like? We're perfectly positioned right here in this area, as a matter of fact, in South County, to have a Costco. We're about halfway between here and, is it the other one in Tumwater?
Tumwater, Vancouver.
One down Vancouver. I'm going to be pushing that conversation. I'm going to make some phone calls, do whatever I need to do, find out how can we get that kind of development down here. But one of the things that these industries look for when they come to an area is, are we meeting our transportation needs? And the reality is that we're not in Lewis County. Transportation has become critically important to the survival of any area trying to develop economically. I was here recently at a men's breakfast over at the Assembly of God Church when we were talking. I was talking to a gentleman that was concerned about why Vader can't get a rail stop here because you have rail coming through. You probably know the gentleman I'm talking about. Well, I can't do anything about that, but what we can do is provide possible transit service into this area. And the reason this is important is because mobility is critical for people. We may have senior citizens that cannot drive anymore, but they'd like to get to Shaheles or they'd like to get to Kelso and do some shopping, but they have to wait on, you know, a family member, a grandchild, whomever it might be, to make time in their schedule to come and pick them up. With transit, we provide mobility for senior citizens so that they can get from point A to point B. And they get to experience that freedom of mobility, they get to take charge of their own lives, and quite frankly, take care of themselves in that respect. Plus, it also offers them an opportunity to get to their doctor's appointments, different things like that, different events, senior centers as they might want to attend. But the idea behind this is to help drive our economy. The reason I am so passionate about this entire prospect is because as a county commissioner, dealing directly with state legislators, the state is not doing what they need to do for Lewis County. One of the reasons that we're not developing the way we need to develop in Lewis County is because the state has determined that they're not going to pay for the services that they demand that we provide. To give you an example, you may have heard us talk an awful lot here recently about unfunded mandates. One of those is indigent defense, to which the county has to pay 1.5 million a year or the state returns back to us maybe $200,000. It's not equitable. And it creates problems for us here in the county when we want to try to save our citizens' money and to offer services that don't cost an arm and a leg. Well, we've got a problem in that I think in the past, we've had commissioners perhaps, not specifically Gary Stamper or the fund, but just other commissioners, that perhaps spent more time wringing their hands about what's going to happen rather than that going and looking at the local resources that we have. And that's what I'm trying to do, is look at how we can make lemonade out of lemons. So we have a resource here in transportation. We have the opportunity, the possibility, if we can expand transit services to the entire county, it makes us a little more attractive for businesses that want to come in this area. It also drives the conversation about education. Centraia College, President Dr. Robert Moorebacher and I have been discussing this, and he is fully on board with this, in that we have running start students that are in different outlying areas of the county, but because they don't have their own transportation, they can't get back and forth to the college campus so they can do their studies there. Transit will provide that, is we will offer bus passes to kids that want to get to college. So it increases our ability to educate our kids. And I came in on the tail end of that discussion here about the school building, and I know immediately that Vader's very concerned about their school kids. And so this is another opportunity to push that conversation. There's a lot of things that go into this, and a lot of this information is in front of you. Transit will provide us some great opportunities down the line to see some very good things happen. And the city of Winlock is very excited about this. Mayor Bradshaw has promised their full support. The city of Toledo, Mayor Steve Dobash, we met with them late last week, very excited about the idea. Mayor Dobash is specifically excited about what it can do for their students at Toledo High School. There's a great opportunity here. Now, everything, you know, everything costs money. Everything's got to be paid for. And I know you just discussed a school bond, and I see all the eyes getting wide right now. What's this going to look like? This is literally going to cost a penny on a $5 purchase. Okay? I get it, the tax is a terrible, it's a four-letter word that only has three letters, and I get that. But it would be a two-tenths of a percent sales tax that you would vote on in November. The current taxing benefit district is Centraia and Shaheles. They already pay a two-tenths of a percent so that it can have transit services. In order for us to expand the district, everyone in the district has to pay that same sales tax in order to provide the tax income so that we can operate bus service in this area. And again, when you think about it, it is a single penny on a $5 purchase, and that's the way I hope that people will understand that. And so in order to participate, we're asking the city of Vader, Mayor Smith, to come and be a part of this transportation conference because we will take a vote to move forward with expanding it. And how this will work is that if this conference votes to move forward, every community that participates will basically petition the BLCC to put this on the ballot in November. BLCC will have a 30-day period in which to choose to veto it or not, which I can tell you right now, this has the full weight of the board of county commissioners behind it right now. There will be a 60-day opt-out period for those that perhaps have buyer's remorse, as you will, but they will get an opportunity, if they make a determination afterwards, to opt out of it.
How long is the opt-out time?
60 days, from the time that we vote for this. Now, I'd like to say something about this idea. We have met with great success, the majority of our cities. City of Centraia, city of Shaheles, it won't really affect their services one way or the other, but they have to be a part of this and they're on board with the idea. We met with the city, or the town of PL this week, very excited that, believe that they're fully on board with us. Again, your neighbors, Winlock and Toledo, we've met with Mossy Rock, they're excited about it. The folks out in Packwood are thrilled because they have folks that retired out there to that area 20 years ago when they were in their 60s. Well, guess what? Now they've aged and they need to have transportation to get them back and forth. And the closest hospital out there is Morton. And so if they don't drive anymore, we'll be able to continue the services that are already out there. And one of the questions we get asked from a lot of people, and I think probably most people in here are able to drive, able to, you know, transport themselves around the community, how does this benefit me? I don't think I would ever ride the bus. Why would I ever ride the bus and why should I pay for this? Well, that's a good point. For many of us in here, it won't benefit us, but it will benefit your neighbor. You may have a family member right now that could use these services. It will benefit them. We're asking for everyone to step up and be forward-thinking with this because, as you folks understand, economic development is coming very slowly to this area. And as a county commissioner, I am personally committed to seeing development in South County. I believe we have great opportunities down here to grow and to develop this area so that we can continue to thrive as a county. I might get in trouble up north saying this, but I think there's been too much emphasis placed on Centraia and Shaheles, is that everything has to happen there. It does not. We have a problem up there. We flood.
Oh, yeah.
Plain and simple. Well, in South County, we don't have a lot of those issues. Now, I'm sure there may be some level of flooding in some places, but not the way it is in Centraia and Shaheles. We're working to build a water retention system up in the Willapah Hills to help the upper Shaheles River, to help try to keep water levels down in the event we have another event like 2007. And if you know anything about that particular event, you know that that was somewhat of an anomaly because of the log jam we had up on the north end. That probably would never happen again because we're more prepared. But we have to work on those issues. But I want to start the conversation about development down in this end of the county because I think we have a great opportunity. Our goal ultimately is to provide seamless transportation between Seattle and Portland. Now, that's a big idea and a big vision, and I don't expect to live to see that, but we have a starting point here. And it's an opportunity for us to help our neighbors, help kids, help seniors. It drives a conversation about emergency management. It drives a conversation about getting people to jobs. Right now, I can tell you that in a port of Shaheles, they have jobs available, but the problem is they can't get people there because they don't have transportation to get there. This can provide that for them. So what we're asking for is the support of the city of Vader, Mayor Smith, probably see you there at the mayor's meeting prior to that. And then we will move into the conference. We will have several people that will come and speak. Dr. Moorebacher should be there. Representative Ed Orkut is scheduled to be there. I'm meeting with him tomorrow. We will have some other individuals that will be speaking. We have the full support of the United Way, Eddie Camel has partnered with us. There's a lot of excitement about this. There's been conversation about countywide transit for better than 20 years, and now we're finally getting closer to where we can see that as a reality. And so I came to present that to you tonight. I think I was a little bit better prepared than the last time I was here. I hope I was. But I'm going to leave this information with you. And you guys are special because we haven't done this anywhere else where we left the information. One or two people we've done, but I'm going to leave it with you because, just so that you have something to look at, some of the numbers there will give you an explanation of what the feasibility looks like. The greatest concentration of people that this will be affected by is obviously the I-5 corridor. And so I'm here tonight to ask for your support. Mayor Smith will be come, and we will ask you to cast a yes vote in favor of this. And if there are any questions about this, I'll be more than happy to answer them very quickly for you.
Would this include Rhyderwood as an answer?
Yes. That's funny because you're about the third or fourth person. Is Rhyderwood going to be included? Oh, absolutely. Now, they are not, obviously they're not incorporated, so they wouldn't have a vote in this, but yes, we will provide services.
And they're in Kelso County.
Yes, into Kelso. Into Kelso, we're talking about that. Now, here's the beauty of this, is that once we begin to develop the routes, now this is not going to be a quick process. I'm an advocate for change to take place, but it's got to be change that once we set it in place, it's got to take root. And so this will be a slow process, but it will be a process nonetheless that will take place. One of the things that we will do, and I'm not at this moment, I'm taking my county commissioner hat off and putting on my director of Twin Transit hat, we will come to the community and talk to the citizens about what works best for this community. What routes can we establish for you that will work best? Where can we put a location, a transit stop that's easily accessible for those people that need to be able to ride the bus to get either south or coming on? And so you will be involved in that conversation. And once we do this, if we pass this in November, I'm committed to coming back to you periodically reviewing reports of how successful we're being, the things that we're trying to get in place, the infrastructure we'll be building, and we will be available at any time to answer those kinds of questions.
Great. Wonderful presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. See you then. Thank you.
All right. Well, as you heard, he's extended a very strong invitation for the mayor to be present and to vote in the affirmative when that issue was discussed at the courthouse. I would like to get a sense of the council membership, if you're supportive of that affirmative vote.
I'm 100% supportive.
Same here?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Okay. With that consensus, and I share that, so that's the voice that they will hear from the city of Vader. Okay, then with that, let's proceed with our city business. The council, item number one, to consider recommendation for park board vacancies. This is sadly something of a repetitive process for you. I was quite saddened to get a phone call from Debbie Crumples, who was so eager and enthusiastic and skilled and who made a positive contribution, her first meeting or two even. But her circumstances have changed dramatically just a few days ago, so for the time being, she's not going to be able to serve on the park board.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, but she asked us not to remove her name from our files since her future reference. So with that, plus Rihanna Hansen, we've felt it might be the time for her with family situation, too, so she's asked to be released from that as well. Now, we do have a comment. Would the council care to hear?
Do you guys ever meet these people before you say okay? Do they ever come? I don't know. I've never seen them.
It happens, yeah. When they can, they do. And interesting point you should raise, because I tried to invite them here, and not try, I do, and when they can, they come. But, and I've received assurances from the two individuals I'm submitting to you for your consideration. They gave their assurances that they were going to be here tonight. So I'm going to sit here somewhat disappointed as well that they're not here to, so that you can at least see who you're affirmative. However, in this case, I can tell you that their names came to me at the recommendation of other residents of the community and members of this distinguished city council as well, so who are acquainted with them. But the best we can do is give you a letter that has my impressions of them. They are residents of the community. They own property here in town, and they are, as I depict them, they're energetic, they're intelligent, they're concerned about the betterment of the.
Just a reminder, the only letter that council has is the first letter, just one person, so they're confused why you're talking about.
Yes, we've never called one name. You're talking as if it has.
I sent that to you.
I just read it.
Well, for heaven's sake.
We're looking for two. We're circling only one and not finding two. Sorry.
Well, our communication system has once again failed us, for heaven's sakes. No, then could we, let me just read the letter. Both of these individuals are closely associated, so it's a package here. This letter is to inform you that the city of Vader currently has two vacancies on the city park board with the recent departure of Debbie Crumples and Rihanna Hansen. I'm pleased to report, and I am, that I have identified and interviewed two individuals who have expressed strong interest in serving on the park board. I believe both are well-qualified to fill those vacancies. One of the individuals is Melissa Frye. And Ms. Frye is a longtime resident of Vader and has a young daughter who enjoys playing in our parks. She's expressed great interest in helping with the development of our community park. The other person is Dawn Smith, no relation. He is also a Vader resident and actually a close personal friend of Ms. Frye. As I noted, I have interviewed both individuals, and I can report to you that they are indeed energetic, intelligent, and concerned about the betterment of our community. They're all so personable, articulate, and enthusiastic about the opportunity to serve with the other members on the board. For these reasons, I am pleased to present their names to you for your confirmatory vote to serve as voters of the city of Vader park board. So here again, I don't dispute facts that I've unseen, but I know some of you are acquainted with them, so there you have it.
Question and answer time?
Yes, of course.
I'm disappointed that Devin and Brianna are on the same first off.
They are still put in.
Kind of there.
Yeah, it's Brandon and Brianna.
But Brandon quit long ago, long ago.
Yeah, it was about three months ago.
Right, okay. Okay, question. Melissa and Dawn, do they live inside the city limits?
Yes, they do.
Okay, wonderful.
Right across from the, you know, where Ken Jocelyn?
Yes.
Two houses to the west.
Oh, very nice, okay. Have they ever served on a?
No.
I think you were going to ping. Board or cardboard?
I think you were going to ping. Rose's house at one time.
Is this Melissa?
Yeah.
Oh.
How late?
Does Melissa have any conflicts in taking the position? More conflicts or?
Not that I worry. They have two riding lawnmowers that they're anxious to drive over to McMurphy Park. They told me they don't have to do that, but they want to.
Britta, excuse me. Were they aware of the meeting tonight?
Yes, I told them, and they said they were going to be here.
And they realized?
It was 6:20. Yep, they just come because they didn't want to sit through the whole.
And they realized they needed to be voted in by the council?
Absolutely. They noticed.
They're not sending a very good, it'd be sure.
How many residents of the community know about our city council?
My number one concern is is there any conflict in coming to the meetings? Seems to sometimes be.
I think I've made it clear that over the 10 years I've been in this position, we've run through at least 100.
My number one concern is is there any conflict in coming to the meetings? Seems to sometimes be.
I think I've made it clear that over the 10 years I've been in this position, we've run through at least 100, maybe 150 residents of the community serving on park boards and other committees that we've had, planning committees. It's a constant process. There's no pay, as you know, this is strictly volunteerism.
Oh, we're all around that one.
It's just how it is when you have a city that's without committees and they rely on their spirit of volunteerism.
Is Kelly still the chair?
She is.
Yes.
Confidence there.
And she's acquainted with Melissa. She's one of those that actually submitted the name. So, your daughter is very close friends with Melissa's daughter. No, I don't mean to.
Just confidential.
Confidential.
Can't share that in the public.
So, your wife approves of you doing the volunteer?
She approves of anyone who volunteers to be on the board.
So, it's just what happens. Life in a little city.
So, what do we need to do?
So, a typical procedure is the council will submit a motion to approve or to confirm the individuals nominated. And then we vote on it.
Okay. Well, I know Melissa, I'm not acquainted with Don. So, I make a motion to accept Melissa and Don on the park board per Mayor Kent's recommendation.
Okay. You've heard a motion to confirm Melissa Frye and Don Smith and serve as new members of the Vator City Park Board. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Frye. Mr. Frye. No. Okay. So, any further comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. I know it's a leap of faith.
And what time of the month on the agenda is the park board and the?
Yes.
Yet again, I'll ask this question.
They reported last time, so they were going to meet on the 19th, but that's when we knew we didn't have a quorum, as we discovered. So, they're now meeting this coming Monday at 6:00.
So, do we anticipate though, the first meeting of the month possibly though is when park board and planning will do their council report to us?
I think we could confidently say that. They know that they are going to have a report and they will meet. And everyone here is welcome to attend the park board meeting. Feel free to come. They would welcome that, I know. So, with that, then let's proceed to item number two. Council to consider resolution 052018, which is kind of a pro forma action to create a resolution officially declaring the excavator as surplus park. We discussed this in our last council meeting.
I move to approve resolution 052018 providing for the disposal of the Sumitomo brand excavator, which is deemed to be surplus and reasonably foreseeable future and needs of the city as written.
Okay. Heard the motions, bid it by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 052018 as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded?
We're excited.
We want the excavator gone.
We're due to, you got it here. So, do we have any further discussion?
So, who officially seconded? I just missed out. Thanks.
So, with that seconded, any official other conversation? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, council to consider resolution 062018, which is a contract for limb pile removal.
Okay. There is one change which is highlighted in the contract and that was the date of completion, March 31st? Yes. He said he's still going to try to get it done by March 31st. That's his goal. But weather may be crazy, so he wanted to please have 30 days. So, just in case something goes crazy. So, I think that was, I forgot to write it down. That was April 23rd. No, 26th. Four weeks from today. So.
Okay.
Is that the right? That's not the week before. That would be the 19th, April 19th. I'm sorry, you write that.
26th is a nicer date.
So, the 19th?
The 19th, yes. We said 30 days or four weeks.
It's my birthday.
Well, I can just assume that this is just a standard format contract? So, item number, so item number three, under compensation, I'm under the date, the performance bond?
Yes.
Well, of the contract amount for a period of 60 days after the agreement and all this, I mean, you're going to hold, what's he going to hold?
There's no performance bond.
Okay.
I'll move to approve resolution 06-2018 authorizing the mayor to execute the attached service contract for removal of the brush and limb pile located at the wastewater treatment facility with jugs, trucking, and excavation substantially as written.
Okay. You've heard the motions, bid it by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution number 062018 as written, as read as well. Any second for that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional council conversation?
Yeah. I think the contract value of $6,000, I think that all looks good. Excavator won't leave until after the 19th of April when the project is done if it takes that long or whatever.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Sounds perfect.
And if he throws a battery in it and starts it up and uses it on the project, I want it back.
So, you want to add that to the motion?
Just kidding.
Okay. Then with all that having been said, let's put through it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Did that motion is carried?
Do we have the next one? Yes.
Yes. Wow. That's community cleanup. All right. Item number four, council to consider resolution 072018, Lewis County Communication Interlocal Agreement. As you recall, our last council meeting, which we went over this. And I hope that you've had a chance to review it, which is what you, it's painful, I know, but I won't provide any additional commentary. But with council discussion?
Okay. I read this twice. I talked to Steve Mansfield and it's pretty cut and dry. It's going to be, it's going to be self-sufficient. Money will come from grants and 9/11 sales tax. It's a three-year plan. And if we don't do it, we lose our 911 service.
No ring.
This is, I wrote yes. Yes.
You don't want to die.
No, no, no.
So, are you making a motion?
I'm fine. I didn't wear my glasses, Mike. I move to approve resolution 072018 authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for Lewis County Communication Services, including operation, maintenance, and participation substantially as written.
Great, thank you. We've heard the motions, bid it by Mrs. Castello to approve a resolution 072018 as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Do we have any additional council thought in consideration of this? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. That motion is officially passed. Thank you for that. All right. Now, we're ready to consolidate on this five and six and conduct a council conversation on the top of building, open air market, and commercial zone slash home occupation discussion. Okay. I'm anxious to find out what the council thought, sorry, on the topic, knowing we've discussed it before. It's a very positive thing.
Okay, we talked about this, I brought a presentation to council in August, no, excuse me, July the 27th of 2017. Most of you remember my pretty little pictures I had and the whole thing. Council replied on August the 10th of 2017. We got numerous emails from the attorney and city planner and et cetera, and everything was a go. Now, I have received, as a matter of fact, the mayor actually gave it to me, was from Mr. Townsend, and it was dated February. And that's the one that's on the top of your little hand that I gave you. And he's requesting me to do a building permit for what he's calling my commercial building. It's 120 square feet. He wants a site review plan, a setback plan, parking evaluation report, which by the way, if we do the new street, it will change the parking thing. And no extension cord or water hose are allowed for any reason. And I will tell you that I will wash the building, I will water my plants, and I will plug Christmas lights in. So, the IVC clearly states in section 15.01 and 15.06, which I provided you, one is residential and one is commercial, and it both says detached building. So, I don't think farmer's market vegetables and fruits is any different than selling gadget gadgets or rocks. This was, I felt like I was very honest when I gave my report that this was going to be for a two or three day event for somebody to sell their wares out of. I had no intentions of it being a formidable building. And now my building has arrived. And it is 120 square feet. And we're going to sell plants out of it at May Day. It has no utilities. Nobody's living in it. It is kind of nice. I just, I just want to express to you that this was never my intent. If I proceed at this rate, I will have $10,000 invested in my plan with three of them. And for $10,000, I could have added on to my building. So, for me to all of a sudden be here wanting, having to do a permit, a site plan, because with a site plan, I can move that building tomorrow and turn it around in a circle and be facing another direction. I mean, it's portable. And I am in a multi-use zone. I'm residential and commercial. If I put it on the other side of my fence, four feet away, I'm at my rental property. Now I'm at a house. I'm surrounded by homes on the backside and the side of me. Hello, everybody. Okay, so.
Where's Ben?
Okay, so, my question is, is how can we, as a group, get past this little problem? Because there's other people that will want to do the 120. Anybody over that? Yes, I do know that someone in our audience is going to do a larger building. Certainly that's going to be permitted. I understand if you put utilities in it, you have to do it properly. I'm looking for my old council people to decide how this is going to go.
Well, I know that if I build a shed that's 120 square feet, I don't have to get a permit for it.
Well, the question is, I'm commercial. The question is, the question is that I'm being stated as commercial. And am I commercial? Well, I'm in mixed use. So, I think it's, I think we're kind of a, we're at a decision.
These are valid questions. So, we're spiriting.
Exactly.
Nobody's done this before in our tenure, so.
Right.
We're applying the guidelines or regulations we have in place, so, but I'm sure a solution can be found.
I was kind of wondering, and I want to hear Mike's number that he's added to it. I want to, after, after I get through. But I was thinking maybe, depending on what yours is, which I don't know, we could just do a little ordinance here that says, forget about that little adventure in that area and then whatever you're going to talk about and do something that might.
I agree. I'm just sitting a little uneasy. We do need to resolve the questions we want to.
Well, certainly.
But we also need to remember that this is a city council meeting and it is a public meeting and you are an elected official and so we've got to avoid a conflict of interest here.
But I wasn't a conflict of interest in August of last year.
And I'm not saying you're not raised issue.
Right, right.
You don't want to expose yourself to any legal constraints here in a public meeting like this.
I will, I will make a comment to the general public that I do not feel like I am a conflict of interest on this. Because this, I was, I was a community person standing up there a year ago when this was all resolved, I thought. So, having said that, we can, we can move forward.
Getting an idea approved is one thing, but then actually the applicable permits departments of whatever emerges from those conversations is another.
Certainly.
So, it's predictable that you're going to have questions.
Certainly. I'd love to discuss this.
Yeah. But it's you, a land use question, which this essentially is, a city member, a voting member of the city council who owns the property, trying to affect the decision-making of fellow council members is clearly covered by state law. You don't want to step across that line of conflict of interest.
Perfect.
Prec�ole is a step that's almost mandatory. But I don't think we crossed any lines here for you. So, I think it's an issue.
And I have to be careful on the next one, the same.
Obviously, we have a decision.
Sure. But it doesn't mean we don't have to resolve these questions. How we do that, I think, is what we're going to explore here. Now, I know Jill, did you want to make a comment? We have comments also from the public.
I think.
For, we're okay.
Mike and I still continue in the conversation with the rest of the council.
No, I think if we don't make any official decisions.
Decisions, okay, okay.
Based on your opinion.
And it needs, the other thing that the attorney said was that it needs to be about the whole community and not just about one property. So, you need to make sure you keep it, you know, like a blanket. So, try, yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Better safe than sorry.
I'm good.
Do we only hear two comments?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
First, if it shouldn't have been discussed, it shouldn't have been put on the agenda. Second, is there any way there can be a waiver produced? A, what do you call it?
A variance.
A variance produced for this case?
It's possible.
Or similar cases?
You can always apply.
To solve this situation?
That's, I think what we're saying, so I'm sure we can find a solution to it. Yeah, for sure. Yes, go ahead.
Didn't Mr. Townsend weigh in last August or July? Was he one of the people that weighed in with the planner? And why wasn't he? If you were talking about little shit, why wasn't he weighing in then? And why is he weighing in now? You know, was the man in town saw you building something or did you, were you with it? I mean.
I think I'd have to refer back. My recollection was that it was concept, that we're talking respectively, and you almost have to wait until you hear what ideas are actually proposed. It's one thing to have a picture, but it's another to actually do something. So, that's my response. I don't, but we can figure this out, I'm sure, even if it's outside of the formative city council.
Well, and if you just store, do you store stuff in it or is it like actual, I mean, right now, what are you doing with it?
Well, the purpose would be to store things in it for a sale.
But here again, we don't want to focus on specifics. We're going to, we get in.
What I remember we talked about in the past was people in the community being able to have a small outbuilding that they can use as an artist, an artist studio, where you get to open the doors up and have people come in and purchase what you, like your wares, like that. That's what I remember. And we just. Like that, that's what I remember, and we decided that that, you know, would be something that the person selling wares would need, you know.
A business license.
And actually, there wasn't much more that we talked about that day.
Special use permit.
It was a feel-good thing that was supported.
So, I don't know if this will be helpful, but some clarification, the document that was provided, I have copies of that for each of the council members. The second page is the additional information, which it sounds like you already have, from Les Townsend. Okay, but if you want to take that, take both pages. But the first page is what was handed out to council and the public on, take, no, 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 mayor, take the two front pages.
Oh.
Yeah. The first page is what was handed out to council and the public at the council meeting on August 10th, after, like Judy said, the first council, or the council meeting in July, she had her little packet, and then we provided a response. And Les Townsend was not asked at that time, I went back and checked, he was not asked at that time, thinking that this was more of a planning-type topic. So, that's why we reached out to the planner, to the insurance, because they always give us good feedback, and the city attorney. And so, they refer, if you read their responses, I highlighted a few little points there, they refer to some issues that needed to be addressed. If you want, you know, they all said, you know, I don't see why this would be a problem, but these are some things you need to be able to address if you're going to do that kind of activity. You know, health things with the health, environmental health department, parking, business licenses, utility hookups. Should it require insurance inspection by code enforcement and the fire marshal? Hold harmless agreements, that's protection for the property owner. And then somewhere in here, I don't see where I highlighted, that I highlighted, oh, but it said, oh, under city attorney, it says, the first thing you want to do is look at the zoning of the parcel and whether this type of use is allowed and what land use permits are needed. Next, you want to check with Les and see what would be allowed or not under the city's adopted building code. That's why we asked Les, once we saw your building come on, I was like, okay, wait, this is starting, and we haven't seen any paperwork, what is it really going to take to be able to run that kind of a business? So, we pulled this back out to look and refresh our memory as to, you know, what was said at that meeting. And so, this was just, you know, ideas and things that we needed to check on, so that's what we did. We checked with Les and said, what if somebody wanted to do this? And council has already said that they would like to allow this type of thing if we can make it happen, and what would it take? And so, these were the things that he told us applied. And I said, you know, I asked him questions about it, and I said, but this building could very well be under the 120 square foot rule. And he said, the problem is, once you invite the public to come to a space to make purchases, it becomes, that 120-foot rule goes out the door because it becomes a commercial, a commercial building or a commercial use. And so, he says, if it was just for storage of stuff to take from your community center back and forth or whatever, then the 120-square-feet thing would be, would apply. But he said, once you start inviting the public in and make it like a storefront kind of idea, that's when the 120-square-feet doesn't apply anymore, and that it does have to be permitted. And there's health regulations and the fire marshal, and you have to make sure that you have bathrooms and adequate space between buildings and all that kind of stuff.
You can cover bathrooms?
But, no, we're talking about, okay, it says the community center bathrooms. Yeah, he said that the community center bathrooms should, if it's open at the same time, then it should, that should be fine, in his opinion, to cover that, you know. But, but you're also, I heard you say a second ago, something about somebody having it open for three days, and that's it, and so, maybe, maybe this is all being misinterpreted. Maybe you're talking about more of like a garage sale-type thing. Because if it's one person that's going to use it for three days and then they're gone, that might be a different situation. If it becomes a money-making venture or whatever for you, or the community center or whatever, where you're renting that space out to people, that would possibly need the commercial use regulations. And, and I asked him about, about the extension cords, and I said, look, what if, you know, the people who, yeah, who want to open those, you know, it gets cold, what if they want to have a little space heater? It's not even in the building, it's just outside. He says, once you're inviting the public in, you can't have the extension cords out anywhere. He says, it has to, if you need electricity out there, you have to run the electricity and that. Again, once you invite the public in, it's like all bets are off and you have to follow all these other rules.
So, I'm sorry.
That's basically all I understand about it at this point. So, he said, basically, what we need is more information, find out exactly, you know, what the plan is and what's going on, so that the determinations can be made as far as what regulations are triggered and what, you know, what aren't, so.
Again, if we're going to make this blanket for, for everybody, maybe that ought to be something we should consider. I mean, I'm thinking the three-day thing. Because my thought in this whole adventure was, Leona wants to see if her jewelry is really a marketable thing. So, she wants to come for three days and sit there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday just to give it a go. If it was, then she would go over and she would rent from someone else a larger space. And so, my hope would be that if somebody really felt that their product was good, they might want to go larger. And so, it's just an incubator. It's, yeah, it's a test, it really is, it's an expensive test for me.
Yeah, so I think that's what needs to be figured out, is where, you know, what's the actual use and where's it all going to go. And so, you know, but there are state regulations with the building code that we don't have the option of choosing not to do. I mean, the state codes are the state codes. But there are some, as far as the zoning is concerned, and maybe the business licensing and things like that, that's, those are things that council, I think, has a lot more leeway on as far as what, what changes you can make to make it more friendly to do this type of thing.
So, I hope you're sensing that none of this should reflect the sense that the city administration is trying to throw stumbling blocks here. We want to find solutions to it, so you can make this happen.
For everybody too. I want it for everybody that wants to do something on this.
Exactly.
I know there's a way to do it, we just want to figure out what it is.
Do we want to hear, her arm is getting tired, I'm sure.
Not surprisingly, I questioned some of the things that Mr. Townsend has come up with, because I've been to a number of farmer's markets where they have extension cords. I've been to open-air markets where they have not only stationary buildings, but other things that people are coming in and out of, they don't have bathrooms, they don't have water and utilities. So, I questioned some of the things he's asking for, and I don't know about parking, but if I did an open-air market with a couple of buildings across the street, I'm not putting in a bathroom, I don't care where they go, and I'm not doing utilities. I'm, I mean, I will have temporary power, but, or power to my building, but I've seen open-air markets that have extension cords that run out, so something to heat up a fireplace. So, they have generators, or, which, you probably don't want a generator running in town, in the middle of town. So, what do these other towns do that have open-air markets? The one that your wife talked about, the Wenatchee thing?
She just said a name to me, and I passed it to you.
Well, it's also similar, you know?
And I'm really wondering if, once again, there's a communication thing, because not specifically your building, obviously, but if a person was to bring in a 120-square-foot building to sell stuff out of, are they really going to set everything up in that 120 square feet? Or are they going to set stuff up outside and use that as their storage in between? And that type of thing, because if it's a 120-square-foot building, I'm not going to fit in with any other product.
So, if a person was going to do that, they would have purchased big double doors as someone who has a building did, because all the wares are going to be outside.
Well, that's the way it was presented to him, that's the way I explained it to him.
Right.
That people aren't going to be going in the building, it's there.
They're not, it's too small to be inside of them.
He said, it doesn't matter, you're inviting the public to a space to purchase. All I can tell you is what he tells me, I don't know whether it's right or wrong.
And I had the same conversation Jill did with Mr. Townsend on the phone, so I'm not.
You don't get upset too much with the messenger, we resonate with it. If we can find somebody else who can give us a better, we'll come to that in the next act. It's all good.
I want to bring it to attention too, that when this went out, I, I would really like a bakery in Baytown. I mean, I would really like a bakery, fresh baked breads. And it was my big mouth that mentioned that, and Judy had no intent on having any of these hooked up to be a bakery. And I'm wondering how many of these responses came back with the bakery being an issue.
Right, and coffee shop, yeah.
Yeah.
And even at a coffee shop at 120 feet, nobody goes inside that coffee shop.
No.
But still, it has some commercial interference.
Commercial interference kind of thing, so.
I don't know.
Well, but how about you, the farmer's market?
So.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's, that's where we need to figure out, because we, at a farmer's market, or fairs, or whatever, there are extension cords. I do know that when I set up at a fair, I can use one extension cord, I can't double the extension cord. They also bring me out, I don't know what the technical term, I call them a spider box. But they bring a spider box out, and then you can plug into the spider box. And then the cord going to the thing is always covered or behind access or whatever. So, you know, when you say extension cord, granted, those are scary when you're in this type of an industry, because everybody uses 500 feet of little tiny cords all put together, and you go grab it, and it's smoking hot. But, so maybe a spider box, or, or, I don't know, I don't know. But I don't, I don't think that we're all on the same page as far as Les is concerned. I don't think he's on the same page as what we're trying to do, because it does feel like a whole bunch of. I can't say that. It is a lot of odor kill for what we're trying to do. And, yeah, and we want to get this type of stuff taken care of, because we do want, I want to see your little business up and running, but we also can't, we also make, have to make sure that, and this is that, that side of me, the vendor side of me, you have to make sure that everything is up to the right way, because not only you, the city, everybody's liable if someone claims anything. I mean, trips on a cord or whatever, there's just, there's always that. And that goes through farmer's markets, fairs, anything. That's why at my booth, I'm always walking around tucking things under and freaked out, because I know somebody's going to trip and own my house.
Would it not be helpful if we got a consortium together, maybe not even elected official, but somebody who knows the vision of the concept, to connect with Les Townsend, so that we're clear on what it is that we're looking for? But anyway, we have the two comments, council, go ahead.
Last year, we all had a little farmer's market. There was, there was power over there, I didn't pay any attention to if it was, how it was hooked up. But they didn't have any, any problem with it, they had somebody's food truck, I think they had their own generator. And, but there was, didn't seem to be any, any problem other than it was raining the day I went.
So, if you, she's mixed use, and that whole street is mixed use, commercial and residential. So, if I had a home tied into yours, or I have a home occupation, and I have a customer coming to my house to sell widgets, you know, and they're coming in my house, and same issues arise, parking, noise, electricity. You know, so how does that all tie in? If I, you can do it at your home, and I can do it at my home, what, I don't understand the problem like her or anybody on.
Well, as of right now, I don't think that I can do it at my home, like have somebody come in to.
If you sew it, if you sew a nice little dress, you can do that at your home.
I don't know that, well, yeah, you can have somebody come in.
It's not considered a storefront, though. I think, yeah, it is, there, and there's specific home-based businesses in the regulations that are allowed. I don't know if you're, I don't think you're allowed to have an official storefront. At the way the zoning is written right now, you can do services in your home and have people come and pick it up there, that kind of thing. But I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the answers to these, they're beyond my scope, so.
And that, that does lead in to the commercial zoning and home occupation discussion. And what brought this up to my attention was, for instance, if, if you have a, two separate lots, right? And you have an apple tree on each lot. I can take apples from the lot that my house is on and sell them at market. But the lot that my house is not on, I cannot take to market.
I mean, mark the way it's aligned.
The way, that's the way that it's set up right, set up right now.
Could you stand on your.
It's still your lot, and that's why, when I first got that call, and I don't remember who I got it from, I don't know if it was Lasser, if it was this, the Gary Cooper guy, but regardless of who it was, I was floored, because I don't even know exactly where my lot line is. And I have, actually, all my trees are on one lot, but other stuff, if people have it over two lots and they're a joint, I think, number one, that should be null and void. I can, I can understand if there's an empty lot and somebody decides that they want to grow something on that empty lot, but they're not actually there, and it turns into a, an industrial park or whatever, that I, you know, but in a joint lot with your lot, it should all be considered one lot, is my personal feeling. Does that, does that make sense? And then, in the commercial, commercial zone and home occupation discussion, I went to the planning committee, and their thing that they were talking about was revenue towards the city. And we only have your, this little section right here, that's commercial. And that's great, but if we're going to have any businesses, they're going to have to come in, build something, and build up a storefront, and there's just a lot of revenue for that. And as I talked to different people, one of the ideas was opening it up so that people could do a small storefront or a small thing at their house. So, you're, you know, you have your little shop, and you're a dressmaker, and people come to your home, and they check out your dress, and they leave. And they leave money, which is revenue for the city. And as they come into the city, I think what would be awesome to see is, like when you go to, and I'm just spooning this all out with brainstorming. But when you go to a mall and you have all these stores, and they have their locations, wouldn't it be cool if there was a little map of the city downtown? And hey, if you want brownies, Grandma Joe makes the best brownies in town, go check out her place. And you go over there, and Grandma Joe has a little thing of brownies, and she sells her brownies out of her house.
Home-based business.
Home-based businesses, yep.
Directory of home-based business.
That could be a real draw to get people here. You know, that's, I think that's one of the challenges that Vader has, is getting people here. Why do they want to come here? We don't have anything that's drawing people in, but if you were a community that had a bunch of little businesses, and they said, hey, let's go hang out in Vader and check out all the little businesses today, I think that would be great for everyone.
Like a tour, exactly. And like, there's a place in California, I don't know if anyone even knows it, it's called Apple Hill. Like a tour, exactly. And like, there's a place in California, I don't know if anyone even knows it, it's called Apple Hill. And that's a bigger scale, but each farmer on this street, some of them are open, but some of them, they open up just like this. And they have, they let people come onto their property, and they have the best caramel apples in the whole wide world, is that High Hill Ranch in Apple Hill. But you, people literally just drive this, I think it's like fifteen miles or something, and they stop at all these different ranches as they go. And it, not only does it bring revenue, would it bring revenue to the town? But it would also help the town clean up because if you're going to have a storefront, or people coming to your house, then you're gonna want it to look nice because most people aren't gonna pull up to a place and go, "Okay, I'm not eating anything out of there", you know? So hopefully, it would help clean up, clean up the community and bring in the revenue. I definitely, one hundred percent, think that there has to be limitations on all of this. But that's why we started up the discussion because I don't want a, you know, I don't want a 7-Eleven next door to me, but...
Are you excused? If you're going to...
Yeah, I gotta go.
So, that was kind of that thought. And I think that we can, we can tie these things together. The open, the open-air market, to me, is a yard sale. It's, it's a, it's a farmer's market, it's a May Day celebration, it's all these type of things. Because I know that farmers markets, you're going to have people bringing stuff in, and... So, I'll share that.
And when I made the presentation, it was a limited time during the year, which again indicates farmer's market, summer craft, yeah, seasonal kind of thing. It wasn't like year-round or that kind of thing. It was intended to be a test pattern, basically, to see, you know? And again, and again, along Mike's line, you start letting someone make money somehow with their applesauce at home. That promotes a better lifestyle for them. They feel productive. They may be in their sixties or seventies, but they still have got something they can do that is productive for them. Just jams or whatever. So, that's another plus to it.
And the city side of it is, we collect business licenses. We collect sales tax. It's, to me, it's just a win-win all the way around.
We did have a cover...
Mr. Persis did with your Aunt Jo selling her brownies. Now, does her house, home insurance, cover if her customers should break an ankle going down their stairs, or is there any connection with the city?
That's not a connection with the city. That is a connection that she, she has to take care of. And to be totally honest with you, from what I've done research on, no. Her homeowner's insurance won't cover it, won't cover it.
Won't cover it because she's doing a commercial...
Because she's doing a commercial thing. So she'd have to look into, yep. But that's, that's business. It's a lot cheaper than trying to buy a storefront somewhere and maintaining that storefront.
Okay, thank you.
So...
We knew this was gonna generate conversation, I suspect. Knowing that we've got exigent needs, you have a building there that is approaching the need for commercial, yeah. We need to get answers fast, it seems to me. Could we, I know there's a lot of distrust and discontent about trusting our Les Townsend, and I think there's a lot of substance to those concerns. And that's why we've been in the process of looking for substitute.
You're jumping forward.
But what I'm saying is that we can talk about this in a city council meeting, but what, therefore, then do we do? I think that there may be some misunderstanding between Les Townsend, and he's a pretty by-the-book person, and we know that. And who knows? I share thoughts and sentiments that I'm sensing out there. But by the same token, we are Code City, and we are dragging this community out of the eighteenth century and into legality, which is painful in the growth process, but ultimately, and we do have people who are moving into this community. We, I think there are people who are questioning the number of homes, that there are six new homes being built, and permits applied for, and not just one or two. And we do have, some are in the conceptual phase, but they bought the land, and they haven't come in for their, submit for permits yet. But it's real, and I'm excited about the commercial developments that might be occurring downtown. Throw that on top of this. My point is that we are setting ourselves up to embrace this and make it all legal and wonderful, and this could be the explosive catalyst, a historic moment in the city of Vader's history. So, to finish that little diatribe, could we not do research in conjunction with some of the interested parties who have the vision of what you want to accomplish? Work with the individuals we are paying for at the moment, or identify somebody else to pay for, and work with them, whomever it might turn out to be, to overcome through variance, or whatever, the stumbling blocks that we're experiencing right now? Should we do that as a city staff, with the mayor, to working with personnel we've got, soliciting assistance from residents of the community to overcome these obstacles and do it very fast? Would that be some authorization that I would get from the council members?
Yes.
Yes, figure out a way to get rid of this so she can have her glorified fancy garage sale.
Okay.
Not just her, but anyone that wants to have it.
Okay. Mrs. Hunter, would you be supportive of that effort, keeping the council and the public aware of our efforts?
Yes, we need to.
Okay, we have a majority of the council there.
That's a public service, and we need to...
Okay, duly noted. I see three of the four councils, and Mrs. Costello did not participate in that vote because of sensitivities there. So, I'm supportive of that mandate. And so, if any of my voice, or who hear this council meeting, want to come to City Hall and work, participate in that, we welcome them. Did we capture that? We're game? Perfect. We do have a comment.
Shahan's and Centurion Gold Cities?
Yes, they are.
They have farmer's markets all the time.
Well, there's a will, there's a way. If they can do it, I'm sure we can do it.
And I don't think that it's a farmer's market that's the issue.
Not...
I think that...
They sell crafts there, they sell...
Yes. No, I understand that. I think that the way that some of us might have thought one of these things is going on in the city right now was set up, was not set up like a farmer's market. It was set up more as a permanent structure-type thing, and that's obviously not what it is. So, we just need to make sure to pass that on. Because it's totally true. You could move those, or somebody could, someone could pick that up and move it to another side of the city, or something like that. They could put it on a trailer and set it up. I know that the fair has whole tiny homes that they set up, and the public walks through them. You know, with power and everything. So, to me, it's, it's a communication thing, and it's a...
We just gotta figure out a way to make...
To make it work.
Call it, call it whatever it needs to be called, so it can happen.
May I ask on Mike's, what is it that you're looking for? I mean, you described an apple tree on one lot, and an apple tree on the other lot. Are you looking for a zoning, something? I didn't quite get how this...
Not him particularly, it's a general concept.
If someone had to...
I could, I could...
No, well, let's be honest here. I mean, we're not paid, we're not paid to do this.
Yeah, but it's...
If you're a resident, you can stand at that podium and ask the council to do, to do something that needs to change in the city.
I could...
Maybe you can't vote for it, but...
As an elected official, he represents...
He has just as much...
I can run through...
A general concept, he can do that.
I can run through phases that I would like to see happen, if you would like that.
Phases?
Phases. So, my property, I've called Parwell Farms. Did you want me to step up there and do this, or...
No, you're an elected member. We can't avoid that.
So, the first phase was raised bed gardens, not only for personal use, but farmer's markets.
Mike, I just do not think that you want to cross that threshold. Now, we can confirm this with city attorney, but my tenure experience is the worst thing you can do is engage in conflict of interest. You will get yourself in a world of hurt. It's not worth it. We can research this outside this council meeting, come back at our next council meeting.
Then I can, so I can sit down with you and go over exactly what my ultimate plan would be. Yes?
He can't make any decisions about it.
No. No, no, no. I was talking to Judy.
Oh, Judy, oh, yeah.
And only, only two of us.
Yeah, not three.
Yeah.
Because the council doesn't make the land use decisions. For individual permits, is what I'm thinking, so.
That was a loaded question, Judy. Thanks.
I didn't mean it that way. I meant to cross the border. This is very tricky. It is.
Would a person need to solicit the planning committee, then, for a change of, for the changes that...
No, I think council can present ideas that are blanket across, for everybody. We just can't, what she really said, you just gotta stay away from your individual situation. You can't cross that line going from your individual situation to, it has to be something that's for the good of the community, not as you.
Well, when we're discussing, Mayor Ken, when you go and discuss this with other, other folks, and for the good of the community, make sure you're in the blanket so that other folks out there, and everybody, would be able to make their applesauce or...
Yeah, and...
We have the concept.
Yes, yes.
And that would fit into whatever anybody is wanting to do.
Do it. That's perfect. I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Okay, we've got to go with Jill, and then...
It is appropriate for the individual, even whether you're a council member or not, to come into City Hall and talk about your individual project and what needs to happen, and that kind of thing. But when you're in the council meeting where you have decision-making authority, that's where you have to keep it all blank.
Generic.
Yeah, so come in and talk with us on an individual basis, so we can work it out and get these lapses in communication and get the correct information so that we can find out...
And that's where I found out about the two apple trees.
So, why do you...
Got me?
So, you are gonna include, because we all also have multiple parcels on one piece of property, I know you and others. You are gonna include that, so if you have a...
I, I think that's just, to me, yes, I think that that should be a given. I mean, if you have two pieces side by side, and your lawn goes all the way across them, you don't stop mowing at the one, at the property line. That's, that's your property. So...
Was that the answer to my question?
But that, that, from my understanding, that's going to take this commercial zoning, home occupation thing, because right now, you can have a home business on the property with your home. But if your home's not on there, that's not your home business. So, so it's all, it's just weird laws that we need to figure out.
My takeaway from all of this is that we're gonna put a high priority on item five to expedite solutions to item five, and then we're gonna meld the generic conceptual conversation about regulatory constraints, and try to overcome whatever we can to incorporate the vision that... I think I've captured it. And invite members of the public to assist with it. There's a volunteer.
Can you not, somebody, I don't know how this works exactly, but can you not make a motion to adopt an ordinance to research adopting an ordinance that would cover home-based businesses, craft fairs, open-air markets, that doesn't talk about anybody individual, but is making an ordinance for the city? And do it that way?
I think that's, I think that's what we're doing.
Yeah, it could end resulting in that, I think.
It would be part of the comprehensive plan and part of this, from what I understand, from what the planners told us already, is that it would be part of the development regulations, and would be a comprehensive plan amendment. We're in the process right now of working on our comprehensive plan update. So this would be an ideal time to be talking with the planning committee and offering these things up because these things require, state regulations require that you do all the public comments and notifying the public, and giving them lots of opportunity to comment on changes like that. So, but we can, again, it'll take some more research to find out from the city planner, what steps you have to go through. If we wanted to make a change like that to the zoning, what would be required? How would we need to do that at this point?
And we've authorized the mayor to do that, yes. And if the mayor wants any help on that, please let me know.
Okay, and others as well. Spread the word, and get them to come, and admonish them to be patient because working through bureaucratic, the state is a very bureaucratically bound state. I think compared to others, and maybe I'm overstating it, but there is a lot of bureaucracy in this state. Very environmentally sensitive. Okay, but then with that, let's proceed now with item number seven. Sewer waivers for special projects discussion.
Okay, so I was pulled aside the other day, and a lady was telling me that when she, when she pressure washes the side of her house, it makes not only her water bill go up, but because the sewer bill is attached to the water bill, her sewer bill goes up. And I'll throw a personal thing in there. We garden during the winter. You water your garden, and that...
Summer.
Summer, sorry. That water doesn't go into the sewer system. And I realize it's a, it's a measuring device, but I think that that measuring device is skewed somehow because, and that's what she was like. I want to pressure wash the side of my house, but last year, it cost me an extra thirty-five dollars to pressure wash the side of her house. And I...
You know, we provide a break for that in the summer, right?
I do not.
So, we have four months during the summer that we charge people based on their sewer usage for the winter. It's called the summer rate. We charge them for, I can't get the right words out, the winter rate. So, for, I believe it's June, July, August, and September, what we do is we take the other four, or the other nine months of the year, we average their usage during the wintertime, and we charge them during those summer months at the winter rate because we figure people are gardening and filling their pools and doing things like that. So, she must have pressure washed when it wasn't during those four summer months, but we already do make that. It takes a lot of effort on our part to get that winter rate calculated, but we do, but we do it every year.
Is there any way to adjust that? What months are they?
It's June, July, August, and September, the four dry, typically driest months of the year.
So is there any way to maybe move that back, say, six months? Because I know, I've already got my pressure washer out. It's April, spring cleaning time, and...
As a council, you can decide to... As a council, you can decide to, to do it however you want.
Council's program.
You just have to realize that we have set our budget for this year based on the four month. And so, if you do make some changes to, to that for this year, that it will decrease the revenues that we already anticipated for this year. I would recommend thinking about if you do make some changes like that, that you institute it the next year, but, or figure out a way to make it work, I don't know. But just so you, you realize that you do that, it'll adjust the amount of revenue we anticipate. I don't know how big of a difference it would make, but I haven't tried to calculate that, but.
Do you have any idea how many people?
How many people?
Get this lower rate?
Everybody gets it.
Across the board.
What's the, what's the difference between, I haven't ever tried to calculate it.
Question?
Steve, I don't think he gets it, because he was prone.
Watering the donkey. Everybody gets it.
And watering his garden, he said the sewer rate is always higher in the summer, so I'm not.
His, he's, everybody gets it, every single person.
Still contingent upon the amount of water.
Yeah, now, if, but we, what we do first is we do the, the winter average, and we look at that, and if the winter average and the summer amount that they actually used that, that summer period was lower than what their winter average is, we give them the lower of the two. We actually compare to make sure that we're giving them the absolute lowest rate that we can, whether it's the winter average or the summer, because sometimes that happens where the winter average ends up being higher than what they actually used in the summer, so.
No, but make sure you're separating the water bill from the sewer bill. Steve uses a lot of water.
The sewer bill went up in the summertime, and he thought it was unfair because of, it was because of his garden. He felt, he waters the donkey all year long, so he thought it was because of his garden. Well, you have a garden, don't you?
Hopefully, but I have flowers that I water in the summertime, so.
It's possible there was a mistake, but, I mean, we do it for everybody. We, we can't pick and choose. I mean, we do the, everybody the same. That's the way council has it set up, so.
So, should we? Is, is there a way to figure out how much this would?
The difference?
Make it a difference? Is there, you know, if it's, would it be better to not go with whatever is the lower rate? And say you do six months, so that it averages out, so it's basically the same thing all, all year. Does that make sense? So, so if, if this is going to cost the city more money, would it compensate by erasing that lower rate thing and just doing an average?
For twelve months, average?
Well, doing, well, you'd have to do a six-month average, because it's based off of the winter, where you're not using the water to water your lawn or external stuff. But to make it, it would probably make it simpler for you also.
I don't think it would really matter.
And then it wouldn't.
I don't think it would make it any harder or easier to do it that way.
Well, right now, you, you go, you figure out what the average payment should be, so this is your summer payment, based off the winter. And then if their actual usage is lower, then you adjust it down to that.
Yeah.
Right? What I'm saying is.
There aren't very many that that happens, but.
All right, then it's not that big of a deal.
I would say a handful, maybe three or four, maybe five each billing cycle, that, that's the situation. Most people, it's gonna be less in the winter, but periodically that does happen, but it's something we watch for just in case.
So, I would, I would like to see that timeframe be moved a little bit longer for the spring cleaning and, and that, and.
Do the research first.
Do the research to see if that makes sense for it to, to, to come to fruition.
Okay.
I would be game for adding one month to the program.
It's not really possible, because it's.
To do four months instead of six?
Oh, or five instead of six? Yeah. Because it's, it's always two-month billing cycles, so there's no way we could do a five. Yeah, it'd have to be four or six.
The city wouldn't be out that much by just one month, you know, okay, I see that.
We can find out by our next council meeting, I'm sure, if we grant you number two, our new employee. Okay, I'm satisfied with that. It'll be on next council's agenda. All right, looking at, we're at two hours in, let's now address number eight. Council discussion on city attorney, Les Townsend.
Well, I, I put this down, but I think everybody could probably have something to say about it.
Around the council discussion, start with a comment.
Well, I think it was probably last year sometime, I'll just say February, March, April, or something like that. June, June, Jason requested to have this looked into to have another option.
Of as far as.
Mr. Townsend, Mr. Townsend, and we, we never did anything, obviously, or we did do it and never came to any other conclusions or whatever like that.
Still in process.
We're still in process, okay.
No, you'll use never, because we have been.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Napa Vine, let's go, let's talk about Napa Vine and Winlock. They share, as we've talked about before, they share their person. Mr. Townsend is eighty dollars to come out and do the inspection. Those guys over there, you're shaking your head at me?
Oh, it's eighty dollars an hour, not.
Oh, excuse me, eighty dollars an hour. The, the folks over there that shared that gentleman is forty dollars. Forty-seven dollars and then fifty cents.
A mile.
A mile. I'm sorry for feeding that to you. I had it in my notes.
Who is, who is that company, or?
I wouldn't write their contract. And I would have to look at it carefully.
It must be fairly new, because I know they were researching.
Well, yeah, they had a gentleman that was moonlighting in Arizona, and they were having a lot of issues with, Napa Vine was.
It's not complicated.
Right. I'd like to know who they found.
Well, when we heard this, I can tell you that when we, did we make contact with Winlock?
I wasn't able to make contact with him yet, but.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of researching.
I'm trying to think of who, because I've not looked at his name, and it's just kind of their interlocal agreement between Winlock and Napa Vine, and I think it's like the second or third page, it has the pricing on it there. I have had an experience with Mr. Townsend. I do not find him to be knowledgeable. I, I find him to be very argumentative. And, and I, I don't think that people should have to encounter that when they speak to our, our building official person. I wasn't real happy with my inspection when I got it. I had a lot of conversation over that. So, I just thought perhaps we, we might take this opportunity now to be a little more serious about looking into this and.
Well, I personally think the record would show that when this topic was raised, that I did resonate with concerns of not just yourself, but others who had dealings with Mr. Townsend. He was an individual in our original searching that was available and agreed to work for the city. But, so I'm kind of echoing your observations. We've had performance issues with, but I won't cover that in the public firms, I'm just telling you that that's why we're engaged in this research process, and we've been hanging our hat on the prospect that I think I mentioned in a previous council meeting. City of Schehales is engaging in a potential outreach service to other communities, but they're still working through contractual details that I think I would probably refrain from expanding upon in this public meeting, and I anticipated that, telling Jill earlier, they should be done by tomorrow, I would suspect.
So, there's something on the horizon?
Absolutely on the horizon. It could be any day now.
So, is this something that?
I talked to the individual last week.
The council would be able to maybe reach out and?
Yes, they, the negotiations are sensitive, of course, with the entities involved, but it didn't involve Napa Vine and Winlock. So, they've been in the past supportive of our interlocal connectivity. So, if we find somebody out there, well, by all means, that's why we were gonna reach out to Teddy at, at Winlock to see what's happening, but that's fairly new, I have no doubt.
That's not fairly new, but just as a little bit of background, Winlock had both of those people come to their city council meeting, not once, but a couple of times, to give presentations, and the city council found a couple of things. They preferred this not only for what Stormy said, for personal reasons, but also for fiscal reasons, because this man is, or this company is half the price of what they expected to have to pay for Mr. Townsend's ability. Now, on, just as our interactions with Mr. Townsend, they have not been professional, and yes, I resort to name-calling quite quickly, but my husband has built five homes in the last fifteen years, three of them for us, and he's very knowledgeable about building codes and how things are done. And not only that, but we reached out to other building inspectors in this area, and I do not have any confidence that Mr. Townsend has best practices in the building trades. I, I know his background is fire inspection, however, but let me finish.
No, not necessarily, because I know you're making some aspersions as a member of the public about a contractor's employee.
It was a personal thing.
It might not be the forum to do that, and this is a city council meeting, and I've got to be cautious here, because I could make some counter comments with regard to Mr. Townsend's professionalism. He is rather objective, and I find, however, that he isn't necessarily argumentative, but.
Built something.
Yeah, what I can tell you is that I don't think what we're here to do is to go through an depiction of his inadequacies. I think what the council needs to focus on is do we want to research in detail options for the provider that we've got?
And I think we're already doing that.
We are, but we're still open for suggestions. So, if this is an option, because, just because.
It's not an option joke.
Just because two cities are doing, doesn't mean that they're gonna open their arms to a third to join, and we'd be willing to ask.
This is the 2011 agreement between Winlock and Napa Vine, where Napa Vine would provide Winlock building permit, building permit services. And since then, the, that's when Napa Vine's had the falling out with their building department, so.
They're Arizona guys. They, they stayed with the same company and made changes. I talked to Stormy just recently about this.
Who is Stormy?
She's a clerk, is she a clerk? She's a clerk at Winlock. And what's the other one, Freddie? No.
Teddy.
Teddy.
Teddy is there.
Teddy is the other one that actually provided me a copy of that contract just a few months ago.
But it is just Napa Vine providing the services. There is not a separate company, so I'm not sure who Napa Vine has on staff that's qualified to do building.
So, well, I'm a little confused about, because I understood that they were in the process of searching for a replacement for the current inspectors they've got.
Last summer, they, they did have both. They had the Napa Vine person come to city council meeting and Mr. Townsend, you can see it in their notes. And they stayed, they chose to stay with the.
Okay, well, that's good.
Napa Vine, my company had to get a building inspector for Winlock for a project, and he came from Napa Vine. So, if you would like, I would be happy to research that one more and bring you more information. I'd be happy to.
Okay, that'd be great.
And bring you some more information on who it is, business card, that kind of thing, if you'd like.
We had a sit-down with the Napa Vine, well, I personally had a sit-down when we were searching back before we hired Les Townsend with the Napa Vine building, whatever he was. I can't remember, I can't think of his name.
This is Steve Ashley that would have signed this, Public Works Director.
Okay, I don't think it was him. It was actually the building official. But anyways, we had a sit-down and talked and went through, and I can't remember why we didn't go with him, but for some reason, we didn't at that time. I don't know if they didn't have the staffing, or if it was something we want, I can't remember, but we did check into it. I remember that we, because I went over there and sat and talked with them for a long time about it, and asked them lots of questions, but they're still using that same person.
Well, it might be another option along with your Schehales connection?
Yep, yep, and I spoke to the Schehales connection, I have his name, and he's extremely personable and anxious to help little cities if it fits, and we don't know the price of it, but, hey, so we'll stay connected and do that research and let's.
I will do that for you.
And solve a problem.
Wonderful.
We will not take your concerns lightly.
She said something about the city attorney as well, that there's something on the.
Yeah, the city attorney.
Yes, I wanted to make. And I'll try to stay calm. I don't want to cause any ruffles.
That's incredible.
Take it, yes. We have a budget for the city attorney, and I have a copy of the contract that Jill was kind enough to give me of, and it states.
Kindness is what the public.
Well, I asked her for it, and she did it, so that was good. And in her, in her contract, it says that if she goes over fourteen hundred dollars a month, that she comes to the mayor and makes communications with the mayor, and then the mayor decides, okay, well, we need to continue doing whatever you're doing, so go ahead and let your bill go wherever it's gonna go.
Some control over the budget.
Sure, right, right, because of the budget. Okay, having said that, there are twenty working days in a month for any of us. You go to work twenty days out of the month, Joe, I go to work, Monday through Friday. Got it? Yeah, there's five days a week and there's four weeks. So, we actually only have twenty working days that we go to our jobs. Jill is at work for twenty working days. You know, your grade, average, on the average of that. According to our records, we call the attorney with all kinds of questions nineteen days in December out of twenty. In January, we call the attorney twelve days out of twenty. And in February, we call the attorney ten days out of twenty. Now, and, and her, and the bills went from thirty-three hundred dollars, fourteen hundred dollars, and twenty-three fifty for a total of seven thousand and fifty dollars, give or take a nickel. So, I guess my question to this is, could we not, and at two hundred dollars an hour, could we not double up our questions and do it once a week? Is it something that, it's a daily? I just can't imagine calling my attorney every day.
Well, I suspect, I don't have a ready answer for you, but I suspect.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just kind of questioning, this was a question. You know, I'm watching that budget.
Well, I, I think it's a valid question, but knowing the processes involved and knowing the timeframe that you're discussing, that that was a a very legally volatile time period, and so I suspect that there were probably some questions that were rather urgent, probably, that needed addressing for a particular reason. But just to go beyond that generic answer, I'm not prepared to say that, but certainly a suggestion.
I would, I would also say that if we did, if you have, let's say, two questions and each question is worth an hour, if you, just saying. But if you stack those two questions together, you're still going to have a two-hour conversation. Does that make sense? So, what I'm saying is.
Probably not the number of questions.
Not the number of questions, but what I'm saying is, if you have fifteen minutes of conversation with her for each question you have. of conversation with her for each question you have, and you call her every day for fifteen minutes, if you combined all of those, you're still going to take fifteen minutes for each question. Does that make sense?
Doesn't matter if you talk to her.
It doesn't matter if you call her once, or if you just to make a long conversation.
I just question, now, do we have that much to talk to Jill, to the attorney?
Back in, back in December, we definitely did, and.
Well, January, February, you know, I, I, I'm just.
Yeah.
It was just a red flag, and I, as a councilperson watching the budget, I was very interested in that comment.
Perfectly, it's perfectly appropriate question, absolutely.
Does she charge as much if you just sent your questions in an email and she replied back?
No, does not appear that that matters.
She still charges, even if only takes her ten minutes to?
Attorneys, that's the way they.
Yeah, by the minute is how they, they put a little dinner on, and it's how it works.
Did it appear that it mattered?
Two hundred dollars sounds like a lot, doesn't it? But, um, you might find a cheaper attorney, but try and find it, but, um, generally, they're three hundred and fifty to five hundred or more, depending on the services they provide. So, but no, but, we have a comment or a question?
Why don't we buy a local again? Why don't, why do we have a, an attorney that is out of the area? I don't know, and, well, I have a local attorney, but, um, you know, why don't we have a local attorney? I know Winlock has a local attorney, Tilio has a, a local attorney, I know we've used other local attorneys, they haven't all died, I mean, I don't understand why we're not. I mean, I think they all charge about two hundred dollars an hour. And then, don't you guys also have the right to call that, uh, city, Washington City?
M R S.
Somebody, and their attorney's there.
Legal line, yeah, we do that.
You know, but maybe that's a way of.
Standard operating procedure.
Some of those little, um, are they free?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, are there attorneys, how are you using those people, what do they have?
Well.
Well, you know, if they're.
There are some issues that they aren't going to provide a response to, but, um, yeah, in my ten years, and what have we gone through, four or five different local attorneys, and then, uh, one thing I've learned in my lengthy experience with attorneys is you generally get what you pay for, and not every attorney who's local focuses on municipal law and/or particularly land use law. And so, um, my experience with the attorneys is we've waded through them, and we, you know, do a lot of research on the attorneys, and of course, we're not perfect here, I'm not gonna claim that we couldn't do better, and we're always open for that, but, um, when you have a competent attorney, um, you quickly discern if they are competent, and the current attorney we've got, um, is extremely competent. And she is only providing her services as essentially something of a favor for the community, because she is impressed with our efforts to, uh, apply, um, legal state law in a small community.
That's an expensive favor.
Well, I mean, you don't expect him to do it for nothing, if it is more than the previous attorney we had, who was also probably the state's most distinguished land use attorney in the state of Washington, Carol Morrison. But Jennifer Robertson was an employee of Carol Morrison, and so she was also supportive of our community, and so she was willing to provide this service, and, but she lives out of Bellevue, of course.
So, is she like Mr. Buzzard and Mr.?
We had, Jim Buzzard was our city attorney before, yeah. Well, there's a, he withdrew over time because he was focusing on his own criminal law, but, um, his fees, you can check what his fees were too. But we worked with Sam Satterfield, who's, um, have, is providing our municipal court services with Winlock and Napa Vine, as well.
He's local?
He's local, very local.
And our hearing examiner is local, and our indigent defense attorney is local.
Is local, yeah, we are very supportive of our local attorneys. So, but I will defend vehemently the services provided by Jennifer Robertson. However, then I agree with, um, Mr. Parsons that it's not the, necessarily the number of questions, it's the, the quantity, the quality of the question and the subject matter of the question. And, uh, no, being as penny-pinching and peneurious as I am, and sensitive to the, um, the budget challenges we have in this community, um, I would always look for ways to reduce our legal fees, but I don't think it's lost on those present here that there were issues when we decided to engage in the code enforcement activity that predictably required our legal input, because it was a new endeavor for this community. And I'm gonna sit here and predict confidently that as we've polished and refined that effort, which I still defend as being worth, maybe not every penny that we spent on it, but the outcome and the improvements we've made has been worth it, and the aggravation and the expense. I'm gonna predict that, uh, you will see a reduction in the monies expended for that legal service in two thousand and eighteen, uh, which you should know that we've prepared, and did we send the courtesy letters? Today?
Today, yesterday.
Yesterday, so, uh, round two is about to begin, about to, we've sent three. Two are related, um, but that's not part of the agenda, so, um, that's about, you can inquire about that.
I think the moral of an attorney's story is the better we get along, the more money we save. Because.
Insightful.
The more we get along, the less, you know.
That's the courtesy letter.
Marriage is cheap.
Exactly.
Divorce is expensive.
That's an apt, yeah, well, and an apt, um, wisdom, and, um, I, are we okay with the take away from? Then I'm going to declare this council meeting closed at eight twenty P M. Thank you all for your.
Oh, no public comment?
Oh, wait for that public comment.
Yeah, no, is there a public comment?
Yeah, there is.
Open the meeting, Barry.
We will reconvene the meeting. Thank you for whoever caused that.
Adjemment A, hold on. If I stand, we're just gonna.
Well, I'm gonna stand with you, because.
Hold on, I stopped the recording, so you're gonna have to read adjourn again, because I didn't get it on the recording.
Oh, okay, read adjourn, you mean.
Read adjourn, or re.
We're now officially reconvene this meeting after inadvertently adjourned, missing our public comment, at eight twenty P M.
But you closed the meeting at eight twenty-one.
I thought I said eight twenty.
Oh, did you close it at eight twenty-one?
Just adjust the numbers.
Yeah.
Whatever we gotta do.
One minute since then.
Public comment, we have Doug Williams.
Douglas Williams, six twenty-six G Street. My comments, uh, are referring back to Mr. Townsend. Some time ago, I, uh, was informed that Mr. Tom, Townsend, uh, is out of the Olympia-Tumwater area, and I thought, well, that's kind of far away, and through conversations, I was told that it was, uh, uh, he was kind of expensive, and from what I have seen, we're not really getting good service from him. So, uh, I went up to the, uh, the county and asked about, uh, services from them. Well, I was very quickly told they weren't interested in, uh, servicing our building permits, but they did tell me that, or suggested that I go to some of the other cities. So I talked to, um, the Schehalis Building Department, and they were fairly interested, and they said, well, get your decision-maker to talk to our decision-maker, and we can get together and see if we can work something out. Well, I identified Mayor Kenneth Smith as our decision-maker, and, uh, when I informed him of my conversation, he said, oh, well, I'll keep you informed. Well, I haven't heard anything. If the mayor would, uh, enlighten us in any, um, progress made in, in that direction, we would, I'm sure everybody would like to be at court.
Thank you, that was, uh, perfect, I've been three minutes. Well, I'm very pleased to report that, um, that source that, Doug, which I called you back after I had that interaction, is a very individual who I'm, we're working with to, perhaps as a lead, so you've just shared with the public, uh, the source that we're developing, knock on wood. So I hope that provides answers to what you were looking for, and, um, so thank you for that. With that, enlightening public comment, I will officially adjourn the city council meeting at eight twenty-three P M.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Make sure I get the right numbers.